Mayor, you're free to begin.
Thank you, Max. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to start this meeting with a roll call. Commissioner Byrne?
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Commissioner Gay?
Here.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Here.
Commissioner Kalusi? Commissioner Kalusi? Commissioner Shosnawski?
Here.
Commissioner Kalusi, can you hear me? Is she on?
She is. I'm not sure if her audience turned up on her side.
Commissioner Kalusi, can you hear me? No. Someone may text her on the outside. We'll get.
I figured it out.
Commissioner Kalusi? Hold on a minute. Commissioner Kalusi, are you there?
I'm here now.
Okay, great. Thank you. We do not have any correspondence with today's agenda, and we do not have any minutes for today's agenda, so we'll move right into the city manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, commissioners. Regarding the Merge Wayfinding Project, all signs have been delivered to the city with the exception of a few panels that still need to be reprinted. The installation contractor was on site last week performing some emergency hurricane damage repairs, and they have also continued the installation. Substantial completion is anticipated for the end of August. The street paving advertisement for bid was opened, and the results will be presented at the next workshop meeting. Two bids were received, one from Adele Construction and one from Georgia Wrench. Adele is the apparent low bidder. We were advised just Wednesday morning that the Water Infrastructure Advisory Council approved the city's drinking water matching planning grant application this past Wednesday. The grant will provide $40,000 to evaluate three of the city's existing well facilities and make recommendations for improvements, upgrades, and/or replacement in order to maintain the city's water supply and water quality. Mr. Miller was successful in obtaining this grant.
Sorry, we were checking the livestream.
We weren't livestreaming. We just were live, yeah.
It's okay. It was the livestream you do what more.
You want me to repeat anything?
No.
We have a proposed water interconnection with the town of Henlopen Acres. We've been in discussions with town manager in Henlopen Acres for over six months for proposed water interconnection for emergency use only. This will be located at Eastman Street and St. Michael's Place. Mr. Williams has some additional information for you pertaining to this. Kevin?
Okay, thank you, Sharon. As she mentioned, we've been working with the Henlopen Acres for a period of time now. This is one of four sites that were high on our list to work an interconnection with. When they came to us and requested it, it was like Christmas for us. We said, well, this is a great opportunity. They're willing to pay for everything, so it looks like a great opportunity for us. Wouldn't have been our highest priority, but certainly one that we would have wanted to do. It's going to go somewhere near the vicinity of the inner, kind of that bend in the road as you go down Easton and turn onto St. Michael's Place. There it is from the street view. It'll be about a three-by-six-foot vault, probably four to five feet deep in the ground, similar to what we have at other locations. But it'll give us the ability to send water to Henlopen Acres in the event of an emergency over there, or if we were to have an emergency in that little, that portion of town, and we needed them to send water to us, we could do that as well. Just a quick shot, you know, it'll be a vault in the ground with a couple of valves to shut it off and to bypass, and then a site for a meter to be installed, if necessary, down the road. But at this point in time, because it's just going to be used as an emergency, we didn't see the need to install a meter, you know, spend thousands of dollars to put a meter in that when we would ultimately need to use it, it may or may not work, because they need to be worked all the time. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Kevin, I understand that they're paying for the, they're paying for the infrastructure to put it in. Are we receiving any other kind of funds from Henlopen to connect to our system?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one more item to report, Mayor.
Okay.
Just a light update on the lifeguard status. We currently have three lifeguards not working due to the pandemic. They have symptoms, and there's a total of 25 lifeguards so far that have been tested positive. The total life, number of lifeguards currently working is now down from 48 to 30, with three more leaving for other purposes, college, other responsibilities. So they'll be leaving this weekend, and that gives us six lifeguard chairs of the 19 that we have out on the beach, pulled on a daily basis, and they are not in service due to the staffing shortages. And the number will most likely decrease even more in the next week or so, again, due to staffing issues and college returns. So we're doubling up at stops, and now they are, you know, guarding as best they can. Thank you.
Thank you. And you have street aid expenditures?
Yeah, I'll just come back to that, Mayor. Thank you.
I have the number.
I have. I'm sorry. Okay, there is one street aid expenditure to Del Marva Power in the amount of $8,916.29 for streetlights.
I move approval.
Say.
We have a motion and a second to approve street aid expenditures of $8916.25. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. City solicitor, please.
I have a question. Mayor, go ahead. Can I go? Commissioner Schlosser? Yep, I would just like to bring up as part of the city manager's reporting that given what Commissioner Shonawski reported last, at the last meeting regarding the accident at, I can't remember exactly where it was.
Boston, Baltimore.
Oh, yeah. And others, just close calls that I've observed recently as we're getting more increased traffic here for this, you know, for this, for the end of summer. I would like us to consider, and I don't think we need a vote, but I'd just like to have a quick discussion with the city manager and others on perhaps going forward with the 50K to put in pedestrian crosswalk safety signals. This was a project we all agreed on. It's 50K. I think the, you know, the price of a life is way beyond that, and it seems we've been managing our budget well. Yes, we still need to be conservative, put a lot on hold, but I think we can't put pedestrian safety on hold. So I would just like to propose that as part of, you know, moving forward, that we do move forward with that even though most of our capital plan is, expenditures are on hold. So I'm open to suggestion. I think it's appropriate to bring it up here under city manager reporting, but I don't know if there's any other comments. I'd really like to move that forward if we could.
Glenn, since we don't have it on the agenda, is that something that we can discuss under city manager's report?
It's part of the capital budget.
Hold on, please.
Okay, yeah.
Sure, it's part of the budget, but, you know, the last decision of the commissioners was to put capital projects on hold. I don't know that it's appropriate to bring it up now, and not anything against public safety, because obviously we're all in for that, but I don't, you know, it's just something not at all on the agenda.
Yeah, that's my fear as well. And so we can put it on the agenda for the workshop on September 8th?
Okay, Mayor, that's fine with me. It's okay. I guess we can wait a little over a week, so that's fine, or two weeks, whatever the date is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mendelis, anything for city solicitor?
I'm sorry, I have a couple of things, Mayor, but they all relate to the agenda items. I'll just bring them up at that time.
Okay, great. All right, we have no old business. We'll move right into new business, which the first is, as you remember from our workshop, the Public Works Director discussed the requested board action to vote on a contract bid to Grassbusters Landscaping, Inc. from Newark, Delaware in the amount of $1,223,294 for the Lake Avenue Phase II Streetscape. I think the Public Works Director gave a pretty thorough discussion on that, and I know there were questions from the commissioners. If there are any questions, we can open it up now, or we can just get a motion and a second to approve that amount for the Public Works Director for Grassbusters Landscaping on that Streetscape project. Any questions?
Mayor, I move for approval.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Grassbusters Landscaping for the Lake Avenue Streetscape project, Before we take a vote, there is a member of the public that would like to address this issue, Walter Brittingham. Max, if you can turn his phone on, please. Did we just lose him? Oh, there he is. Mr. Brittingham, are you there?
It sounds like he's trying to use our livestream to follow along, and it's behind.
No, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I can hear you. My only clarification to it, my only clarification is a reminder that it does not include electric lighting and also landscaping, but otherwise it should proceed.
Thank you. Again, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, commissioners? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. Now we'll move right into B, which is discuss the Environment Committee's proposal and recommendations to the wireless communications facility. We talked about this a little bit, the workshop, about the possibility of postponing, but I thought we might as well give Heather Metz the opportunity to speak briefly on their proposal. I'm sure this will go to the next administration for further discussion, but to maybe summarize what she has put in front of the commissioners for discussion, and then that can be taken up further with the next administration. Ms. Metz, are you on the phone, please?
Yes, I am.
Please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for giving me the opportunity today and for putting me on the agenda. At our August 7th meeting, the Environment Committee approved the proposal of recommendations for updating our wireless communications facilities ordinance. I don't want to go too much into it today. I hope you guys have all had a chance to read the proposal. It's pretty detailed, and it outlines pretty much everything that we wanted to incorporate. I'll just say a brief summary, and if you want me to go into more detail or have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. In brief summary, that the demand for more wireless communications facilities antennas has been to be placed on telephone, electric, light, and traffic poles throughout the city, and including buildings and in residential areas. That pressure from wireless communications facilities providers is intensifying. We need to act quickly to protect our city's aesthetics, our property values, and the safety of our citizens. Updates to the city's wireless communications facilities ordinances and procedures are necessary to accomplish this. I urge the city to adopt this proposal, and if the mayor and commissioners and the city solicitor feel it is necessary to hire a law firm that will incorporate them into a more protective ordinance that is still in accordance with federal rules. I'd be happy for, if you guys would like, to give a more detailed accounting of the overall issue. For any of the members of the public that may not be familiar with this issue, sorry, they're coming right down my street. For any of the members of the public that may not be familiar with this issue, it's a pretty complex issue, and there are a lot of legal, technical, residential concerns all involved in this very complex issue. Would you guys like to hear a little bit more about the proposal?
If you could, just a couple more minutes, if that's okay.
Okay. So the telecom companies are planning to meet the demand in our community by building higher numbers of smaller wireless communications facilities, each with multiple antenna. These are called small cells. Unfortunately, the super-fast 5G that you see advertised has a lot of limitations. The limitations are that it doesn't travel very far. So for 5G to work in our community, the antennas need to be closely spaced and lower to the ground than the current cellphone towers that you normally see, you know, those big towers with all the antennas hanging off. That's not what the small cells are. The telecom companies plan to install the antennas on existing and new wooden electric poles, telephone light and traffic poles, as I said, in all areas of the city, including residential areas. One expert estimated that they may want to install as many as 40 in our small, one-square-mile city with 18 along the boardwalk. We already have six from AT&amp;T, and I hear that there's more on the way. The telecom companies will continue to put up new small cells as cheaply as possible to maximize their profits at the expense of the city unless we have a zoning ordinance in place that protects our valuable aesthetics. The Federal Communication Commission has issued orders that allow each carrier to have its own small cell. So on one street corner in a residential area could have a small cell from AT&amp;T, Sprint, Verizon, T-Mobile, and any future company that chooses to put their equipment on that pole. The right-of-way in a residential area is already overcrowded with phone and power and cable lines that was not designed to handle. The addition of more poles, antennas, wires, power meters, and switch boxes will have a negative impact on the aesthetics of our city. The allure of our city as a tourist destination, especially the beauty of our residential areas, is what draws vacationers and generates revenue for the city. The aesthetics of our city are closely tied to its revenue-producing ability. Overloading our right-of-way with small cells will also impact the value of the homes they sit in front of. There are some estimates that a 15% reduction in property values can be seen to homes that are placed directly behind one of the small cells. In addition, we are prone to strong coastal storms and hurricanes that can damage poles and cause problems in the community. The effects on people from the radio frequency that is emitted from multiple antennas placed in close proximity to residences has never been studied by the FCC to see if it's safe. Telecom companies admit that they have conducted no safety studies. Many scientific studies do exist that question the safety of this technology. The safety standards the FCC uses are 24 years old. They were established before the wireless technology we're using now was even invented. Studies show that children are impacted more severely. We should have current safety standards before this technology is placed close to homes. There are currently three lawsuits in federal court that question the authority of the FCC to place these small cells in our city. Part of one lawsuit has just been affirmed, just on August 12, that the city does have the right to limit unsightly or out-of-character deployments that are not in harmony with the objectives of our city. The city has commercially zoned areas that are appropriate for placement of this technology that will serve the public. In residential areas, cable to individual homes provides faster, less expensive, and more secure service. Small cells in residentially zoned areas are not in harmony with the zoning objectives of our city. The city's ordinance was amended in November to change the approval procedures for new small cells to meet FCC time limits, which they call the shot clock. But the effect was actually to remove all transparency from the process. Now, small cells can be approved by the city building inspector with no public notice or approval by our city's elected officials. The goal of the proposal is for the city to update its ordinance and procedures so that service can be provided with the least amount of harm to the city and its residents. Currently, our ordinance has no protections for residents, residential areas, and no guidelines for aesthetics. In accordance with the 2010 CDP, which states that "in Rehoboth, we are a small town reminiscent of a bygone era, a place of special beauty." And I'm here just to help you guys to achieve that goal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I can't hear you, Paul.
Paul, you're muted.
Paul, you're muted.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Gay, you had a question, please.
Well, first of all, I just want to thank Heather for all the work she's done on this, you know, over quite a period of time. I've been following it both with their committee meetings and discussions that we've had before, and I really appreciate having proposed recommendations in very clear outline format like this. It's extremely helpful, because it is a complex issue. And I don't think I fully understood it when you all adopted it last. And I especially appreciate having the comparative ordinances from other cities and towns. I always find that to be very useful. And it seems to me, you know, one of the things that people had commented on to me was the setbacks for residential areas. And it seems to me that the 60 feet that's been proposed here is quite reasonable. Obviously, many communities have much larger setbacks, but given the size of our lot, you know, we have to be guided to some extent by that. So, I mean, I think this is very reasonable. One question I guess I would have for Glenn is, I would like to think that this does not mean throwing out the entire, you know, ordinance that was worked on by the Cohen Group and approved by the city a year ago, but would be amending it either with some or all of the points here, and I just wonder what kind of process that is and if that can be fairly easily done, or what.
So, no, we're not going to throw out the entire ordinance. I'm sure you could make amendments to the existing ordinance to the extent you want to move forward with some. I guess what I would comment on is, Heather mentioned a couple cases that are promulgated, that are making their way through the federal system right now that really relate to the issues that she's raising, mostly the safety and health issues of the placement of small cells. Those decisions, you know, since they are directly on point as to the FCC's order as it relates to health and safety, I think will be instructive as to what we can and cannot do once those cases come out. So to the extent you want to, you know, make any amendments to the ordinance that would directly relate to the health and safety, I'd probably wait. Those cases are waiting for a decision now from the courts. Heather did mention the City of Portland versus US case that came out on August 12. That case largely found that the FCC regulations on placement of the small cells is sustainable and valid. It did, interestingly, as Heather mentioned, did strike down some of the FCC regs on the ability of the city to regulate the aesthetics of the small cells. So it seems that we have a little bit more ability to regulate aesthetics, but we didn't get any real direction out of the August 12 opinion as to health and safety concerns. That case wasn't really about the health, safety issues. So I would wait for these two cases, one out of Montgomery County, Maryland, the other one's out of DC. And I would expect them to be decided in the next 30 to 60 days.
Oh, that soon? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. They're entirely submitted, and they've already had oral arguments. So it's now just judges writing opinions.
If I can make a suggestion that the city go ahead and look into hiring, there are a few telecom law firms that would be able to help us write an ordinance that was more protective of the city, that in the meantime, while you're waiting for those judgments to come down from the federal court, that you go ahead and start talking to one of those law firms, and that they will be on the forefront of those decisions and have them interpreted for you and be ready to go when those decisions are made so that our ordinance is ready to go. Because the longer we wait, the more problems we're going to have.
Paul's muted again.
Okay, there we go. Thank you very much, Glenn. I appreciate that. Commissioner Byrne, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I also want to add my thanks to Heather and the Environment Committee for the really thoughtful kind of research that they've done, the way that they've approached this, the thoroughness of their discussion before coming to us. Thank you, Heather. I do have a question for either the city manager or for Kevin. What is the status of either current or expected permits from any of the telecommunications vendors?
So, Commissioner, commissioners, just this week, we received from Verizon approximately 19 permit applications for additional small antennas on the boardwalk. We were anticipating these. We did talk to you about them. And today, we've received five additional ones from Verizon for Rehoboth Avenue. So the status right now is that they're entered into the system. They'll be reviewed by staff, and that starts the process.
Will these come in front of the commissioners before there's a final approval? And what do you anticipate, kind of vis-à-vis the way that we're looking at this information just presented?
So, no, according to the guidelines we have put in place, they would not come before the commissioners again. And after the fees are paid by Verizon and the staff has time to review them, Verizon would be giving the go-ahead to proceed. They're looking to get these in, obviously, after the summer season and being in production and effectively be working, of course, close to the beginning of the new year, at least before next spring.
Are the locations all commercial locations that they're asking to be permitted for?
They're not all commercial. I haven't looked at the five locations today that came in on Rehoboth Avenue, but obviously, the other ones on the boardwalk are, you know, close to some residential properties.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm sorry, can I make a suggestion? Glenn, would it be possible for you to look at some of the language that's in? There's a couple of different ways to go, but there's the Sussex County ordinance, there's the state ordinance, and I think you'll find, and I can send it to you if you can't find it, some language in there that gives special protection to areas on the boardwalk and other areas that use different types of language that should be afforded special protections. And also, just to add that while we're still under a state of emergency, that the city should not be under any legal obligation to accept or approve these permits. And that might buy us a little bit of time to take a look at some of these things and compare it to our ordinance to see where we are. Just a suggestion.
Thank you. Commissioner Shosnawski?
Thank you. I agree with Commissioner Byrne and Gay. I think this is something we definitely need to look at and possibly modify the ordinance. I think it is, I was shocked that these are going up, you know, it could be 15 feet from someone's bed. someone's bedroom, and there's been no public notice about it to those property owners that are in some of the areas. For example, I think Baird and Hickman, one is either going up or plan to go up. So, I commend Heather and the Environmental Committee. Thank you for all the time you've put into this, and I'd like to see us move forward in potentially modifying it and getting counsel that knows what they're doing within this particular subject.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlosser?
Just a question for the city manager. One of the things we had asked for is a plan for this year from both, from any providers that want to put up antennas and such, that shows where they're going to put them up throughout the city by specific location. Do we have that plan, Sharon, from Verizon and AT&amp;T, as to exactly where the proposal is for all these new antennas?
Verizon is the only one who submitted. In questioning AT&amp;T just about four to six weeks ago, they did say that they are not planning to add any additional in the near future. I don't, you know, they could, obviously, but I don't know what their near future now.
And then, what's the, just out of curiosity, and then I'll address the environmental, what's, are the aesthetics of these in accordance with our aesthetic standard, are they new poles, are they different poles, both on Rehoboth and on the boardwalk? Are they similar to what's already there?
So, they would be actually the same manufacturer as the existing poles on the boardwalk. They've been in touch with them, and of course, the dimensions are different, but the pole looks exactly like what is there now currently.
You mean, like the light posts? Is it replacing the light posts that are there?
Yes.
And they're exactly the same as what we have? And are you able to replace the lights with LED lighting, or is that what's already installed there?
Well, no, but the globes can be the same.
So, it's not, we're not moving towards putting in LED lighting while we're in this process? Is that what you're saying?
Not at this time.
Okay. Well, on the environmental side of things, I'm a little concerned we still haven't seen this overall plan for 2020. I understand that the applications came in, Sharon, you did give us a heads up. But I would really encourage, I mean, this is pretty much my last meeting, I think I have one more, but I would really encourage those of you that are going to be here, you know, really look at those maps, that placement, because I, at this point, am now getting a little concerned that we haven't been briefed on the overall plan for this year for upcoming years. And there is an impact on neighborhoods. So, I'm not sure if we should rush to anything right now, and we have some legal limitations, which I don't think the emergency situation would preclude, you know, the providers from moving forward with installations. Glenn can answer that question, to your point, Heather. I think you're going to probably have, they're going to be allowed to move forward, but definitely, I think once, you know, in the next month or so, after these other lawsuits get put in place, that we really should relook at the ordinance. You know, I would also encourage you, from an innovation standpoint, from a technology standpoint, though, I wouldn't delay too much beyond updating the ordinance in the next couple of months, getting these installations, getting 5G capability. As more people are working from home, as more students are obviously getting educated from home, we're going to need this bandwidth, quite frankly, to give everybody a fair shot at getting connectivity, getting great connectivity, so that everybody has equal access to services, to Wi-Fi as we work more from home, as we educate more from home. So, that's just my plea for the next group of folks that'll be running this commission. So, but I'm not sure, Glenn, if we can do anything right now to delay what's already been requested. What's your take on it?
Well, I have not seen anything at the federal level or at the state level that would preclude these installations from going forward. You know, generally, you would find it in either, you know, something that the FCC promulgates or something that our governor promulgates, and there's been no sustainment of, or nothing prohibiting the telecommunications companies from moving forward with their plan.
Can I just clarify one thing about, Lisa, I agree with everything you said, but I just wanted to clarify one thing.
Sure.
That the proposal doesn't in any way limit the 5G from being in the commercial areas where most of the public would be able to access it. And it sounds like that's what Verizon is doing by coming right down Rehoboth Avenue and going down the boardwalk. And I agree, that is definitely necessary for the public. But I was more addressing residential areas. And so, in residential areas, we don't really have a demand for that because everybody has a cabled connection to their home. And when people are working and going to school from home, they're not using 5G, they're using their personal internet service at their house. If you were to use the public 5G to go to school and work, you would have a gigantic cell phone bill from using all that type of that.
No, Heather, I understand technology, okay? I'm saying in the future, Rehoboth is really on the edge of being one of the first towns that have this enhanced capability in the future. I understand we're not at 5G right now. I understand that's not what's being used. I get that. I'm just saying, for the future, really think through how you're going to update this ordinance so we take advantage of new technology for everyone.
Yeah, I didn't want anyone to think that I was trying to prohibit the rolling out of this technology, because I know it's useful and I know it's necessary.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I know, I didn't mean to imply that at all. I was just saying, make sure you take into account the future needs as you update this ordinance, if you do, going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaluzi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Heather had a suggestion that perhaps we engage a law firm specialty in telecommunications. So, my question to you, Mr. Mandalis, is, we have the Cohen Group work on the ordinance that is now in place. I guess our concern is with them, and not to say that necessarily we're moving forward with them to do this piece of it, but were they just unaware of these potential issues as far as health? Do you know?
No, I think they're aware. You know, I thought they were, I thought they knew this material well and put a decent ordinance in place. One of the issues we have is, on the health, safety stuff, you know, there is an order out there from the FCC saying, here are the safety guidelines, and the installations must be consistent with these guidelines. When Verizon or AT&amp;T come in, they certify that their installations are in compliance. So, you know, some of these cases have said, any measure that a municipality puts in place that effectively bans 5G in a particular location is per se in doubt. So, for example, if we were to say, you can't make an installation of 5G within 50 feet of a residential structure in the city of Rehoboth Beach, that would effectively ban 5G in the residential districts, and it would be struck out. So, you know, I don't think that there was, you know, I guess if you're asking if the Cohen Group, you know, was a waste of time and money, I don't think so. I think they know this stuff well, and, you know, I've asked, we still maintain a relationship with Mike Roberts, who helped draft that ordinance in Pittsburgh. And I ask him questions from time to time, and he's always able to provide a good response as to why certain things were not incorporated into the city of Rehoboth Beach's ordinance on these issues that are being raised. So, I think it was money well spent, and we have a decent ordinance in place.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. What I would say is that then there doesn't seem to be, it does make sense, I think, from what you're saying, to wait for these two federal cases, I guess, one out of Rockville and one out of DC, did you say? Before we move forward with anything, because it's, I don't know, well, I'm not sure where in the ordinance we would make changes other than what's been suggested by the environmental group. And it sounds like the people that have worked with Cohen Group could, since they wrote the ordinance, they could, I would imagine, quickly change or change things if, in fact, it made sense that the federal cases would assist us in making safety and health improvements to the ordinance. Is that your take?
Yeah, I agree entirely. And if these cases come out and say, the FCC is completely wrong, and the old health, safety order that they had in place is not sufficient for 5G technology, then I think it'd be entirely appropriate for us to move forward to figure out what are the right measures to put in place. I mean, with that new kind of information, it would maybe be appropriate to even, you know, stop accepting any application until you got that information implemented in the ordinance. But until we have that kind of decision, it's difficult to delay any of these installations or make any significant changes to the ordinance.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Byrne, again?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with a lot that has been stated by Commissioner Schlosser and Kaluzi. Glenn, just to clarify, please, did you say that if we had a 50-foot ban, that that would not be workable in residential areas?
So, what the cases have said is that you can't implement any sort of a measure that effectively bans 5G technology in a certain area. So, in our residential districts, it would be very hard to say you can't make a placement within 50 feet from a residential structure, because if you said that, if that was a regulation we put into place, we'd be effectively banning 5G in the residential district, because a placement of a small cell facility that is more than, greater than 50 feet from any residential structure in the residential district would be very difficult. There are many areas that are 50 feet from residential structures.
Thank you.
Yeah, that, yeah, I mean, that just sounds very, very challenging to me that that couldn't be figured out and still, and particularly when this 5G is not really in direct support of the inhabitants of the residential structures. So, it just gets confusing at that point.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah, go ahead, Heather.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify something in the proposal, that with a lot of input and a lot of research about what other cities and state, or other cities and counties are doing to protect themselves from the aesthetic effects of having these antennas all over their communities, that I worded it very specifically to say 60 feet in a residential area, 60 feet or by special exception. And I think I actually used the wrong terminology, Glenn, you would know better, but I think what I intended was conditional use, which means can be anywhere, but it can't be within 60 feet unless it's by conditional use, which would mean that it has to be approved by the mayor and commissioners before it can be put up. So, it's not a ban in any sense of the word, it's just changing the procedure for approval. And that would also rectify the problem with transparency by making it public. It would give everybody notice, and everybody would know in the community what was planned. A couple of other comments just as far as the FCC goes, just to keep in mind that this FCC order is not a law, it is an order by a commission of the federal government. It was actually only voted on by three people in our whole entire country, it was not voted by any legislative body. It is being challenged in three separate lawsuits. And I'll also point out, at the end of my proposal, there are nine communities that do have actual setbacks. The one I proposed is not really technically a setback that is prohibitive. So, some of the other communities have had, have very prohibitive setbacks, and they haven't been challenged on any of those. Really, in effect, it is not a ban, and I don't think it meets that letter of the FCC requirement. I'll leave it at that. I'll leave it at that.
Heather, I'm sorry if I confused that. I didn't mean to imply that your recommendation or the committee's recommendation was a ban. I was just using an example, that if it was strictly a 50-foot limitation, that could be perceived as a ban. You're right, you did provide for a layer of oversight through a conditional use.
Is that the right terminology? Is it conditional use? Is that what takes it to the mayor and commissioners?
Yeah, I mean, there is what is called a special exception also. Those are often times reviewed by the Board of Judgments. So, if you wanted the oversight to be the commissioners, a conditional use would be the appropriate.
Yeah, I think I used the wrong terminology, then.
Thank you. One last question, Commissioner Gay.
Yeah, I'm really confused now, because, you know, whether it's 50 feet or 60 feet, even if we do it through conditional use, we're going to end up with them, I mean, if the idea is just that they would come to us for approval, but Glenn, you're saying that we would have to approve them, because otherwise, it's a ban in that area or whatever. I mean, at what point do you determine, you know, how many is too many, and what can we turn down? And so...
Right. Well, that's where the rest of our ordinance and the rest of our requirements come into play. And like I said, on August 12th, the federal courts upheld the aesthetic requirements for the FCC order. So, what that would do is put that in the court of the mayor and the commissioners, where we could use our aesthetic requirements to say, no, we don't want this in our community. It doesn't fit with our CDP, it doesn't fit with our residential areas that are, the aesthetics of them are key in generating income for our city. It's a hazard. I mean, we can then roll out all of the aesthetic conditions that they do allow you to reject something for. But if it only goes to the city building inspector and gets improved, then we never have the chance to apply any of those other aesthetic requirements, which the courts have told us are legitimate and very, they will uphold them.
Okay, so I guess, so then, we wouldn't have an outright ban, but we would, by coming to us, we would be able to apply those standards to literally every application that comes through as a way to prevent them.
Yes, I just wrote it so that it's in residential areas within 60 feet, but you could certainly take that to the boardwalk area as well.
Okay. And then, my other question, which is on, talking about the plans that would be submitted for 2020, I guess, and this is maybe a question for the city managers, how all-encompassing are these plans? How far ahead do they plan? In other words, if Verizon had a plan for this year, how long before they change it? You know, what are we really asking for in terms of citywide plans?
Well, as far as how long, you know, I don't know the answer to that. I think, you know, they're coming in now at the end of the season to get their ducks in a row and have these reviewed by the staff so they can be ready, order supplies, and start construction of these new facilities. You know, we, as I said, heard about the five additional ones on Rehoboth Avenue just this past week, and the plans came in today at the end of the week. So, excuse me, I know they're, you know, trying to get everything in order, and probably additional ones will be coming in.
So, you're not going to hear about all of them at once? It is going to, they're going to come in as they develop their plans?
Yeah, yeah. We asked them, and, you know, they do say more in the works, but we don't know the locations of those.
Is it possible for the city to find some way to notify the residents of our town or our city when this happens so that we can be informed? It's just frustrating to not know what's going on.
I mean, there's nothing in the ordinance that requires it, obviously, but there's nothing that prohibits it either.
One of my suggestions was in the ordinances, was for, in residential areas, that everybody within 500 feet be notified when a permit is requested. So, this would at least give the homeowners in the general area the chance to look at it, know what's going on, and contact their elected officials if they have concerns.
Well, it sounds like there's a lot of work that still is going on. Obviously, we do have applications in. Obviously, there are a couple court cases that we're waiting to hear from. So, I think, you know, obviously, this is the next administration's going to have to look at this as well. But I think there's some work to be done. Commissioner Byrne, you have a question?
Really, just a comment. And Mayor, you basically just made the comment that I was going to make. It's, you know, I would be comfortable, before we move the agenda today, that we have some sense of next step for steps. And so, are we saying that it makes sense that we kind of sit on this, propose legislation until these federal cases come out in the next short while? Or do we continue to move this ahead regardless of what's going on in the courts? I think we need just some sense of that, and then I agree with the mayor that... I think we need just some sense of that, and then I agree with the mayor that, that the next administration, the next mayor will decide hopefully to put this on the, on the agenda next month.
Glenn, any, any thoughts?
You know, clearly, there's a turnout, turnover of commissioners about to occur, and really, whatever, whatever direction you decide today could, could, could be changed in a few weeks, but, but, you know, it, it's your policy decision whether you want to try to move forward or not at this time.
Well, Glenn, does it, regardless of change of personnel around our table, so to speak, does it make sense for us to continue to work at this while those two federal cases are, are, are moving along? Or do we wait until we know what comes out of the courts?
Well, obviously, I, you know, I, I think the court decisions are largely going to derive what can be done on the health and safety issues. So, you know, there may be other areas that you want to, to continue to pursue, but I, I really think the court cases are going to be very instructive as to what revisions should or should not be made to the ordinance on, on the health and safety issues, which I think are the, the major concerns that the Environment Committee has raised.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Byrne?
Well, yes, thank you, Glenn, it answers the question. I'm not sure that, that any of us have an answer to how to best clarify next, next steps. That, that's the challenge in front of us, but I guess we just put this in front of us again next month.
Can I just make the suggestion that we have already sat on this for six months, and things are moving quickly out there. Verizon is running their cables, they've got a new tower up in front of Gary's in Dewey Beach, if you want to go take a look at it, it's a good prototype for what's coming our way. And I think sitting on it is not going to be in everybody's best interest. I think all the commissioners and the, and the new mayor coming into, you know, old and new, all have our city's best interests at heart. And I would really urge you guys to, the city, to give Glenn the authority to potentially contact, there's three in particular, law firms that specialize in telecommunications company, or in telecommunications law, and that have helped the other cities that have ordinances that are more protective, put those ordinances in place. I don't think it would hurt anything to go ahead and have him talk to those law firms, establish a relationship, maybe work with, start beginning to work with one of them so that he's ready when those court cases go. If we wait for those court cases to go, and then we have to do all that, it's going to take months and months and months. So again, I would really urge the city to go ahead and, and ask Glenn to get in touch with those law firms, establish a relationship, figure out which ones work best for us, and to start to move forward, knowing that we still may have to make some final adjustments based on what comes in from the federal courts.
Sharon, can you tell me about the 19 applications that are in? When, when would they start? Do they have a start date on those?
No, so again, the, the permit process has started this week. They're being processed through Building and Licensing. Staff has meeting next week to discuss them and take a look at them. You know, they want to start soon after the season, they need to order their supplies and materials and, you know, get this going. So as far as the start date, nothing specific.
So the, the permits probably won't be issued for a couple weeks, and maybe they start as early as September 15th, maybe September 30th?
Process time limit, 90 days.
Mayor, can you say that again?
So, like, the permits, you know, the permits, the process is starting now, but I would assume the permits probably won't be ready to approve until maybe two, three more weeks. They probably won't start until after the 15th of September? I mean, so, you know.
I, I think that's, that's certainly fair to say. They're, you know, going with past history, when the permits have been approved, with, it's been months before, you know, they're ready to go with anything. I, I can't say that, in dealing with AT&amp;T at least, it's been several months.
So I, I think in, in that time period, it's probably, maybe those two cases will be solved, and then also maybe the new administration can come up with their thoughts on how to do it, because there is a, a fairly substantial change in the commission, and, you know, the new commissioners may have different ideas, or they may have the same ideas and they want to do something quickly. And I think by that time, as the new administration comes in the door, the Environment Committee, Ms. Metz, can again push their agenda and see what the plan might be, because obviously she's got her information out in front of the public, and I would think that those commissioners will be looking at that information as we speak, and so it'd probably be easy for them to hit the ground running.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Commissioner Shersnowski.
Thank you, Mayor. While I understand there's, there's the two cases that are pending, and it's important to see the outcome of that, I think Heather's right, we've been sitting on this for, for a while, and I do think we should move forward. And at the very, very least, there absolutely should be a pub, some type of public notice. And even if we don't amend the ordinance now to include that, I, I'd ask that the city manager and Building and Licensing, out of practice, start doing that. There's, there is no reason why one of these should go up to some, you know, next to someone's house and they're not even notified. That's, and, and it happened at Baird and Hickman, and that's a failure on, on us as a city. It, it should not go up to someone's, next to someone's house without any type of notice. So I, I'd ask that the city manager start doing that out of practice.
So one thing we're, that I just mentioned, the city manager, and, and she agreed, is that perhaps we could take the report from the Environment Committee, send it to the consultant, the Cohen law group that we used, and, and have them look at it. They may say, there are wonderful things here that we can implement right away, that makes sense, and they might go back and say, but, but these two things cannot be implemented, and here's why, and they might say, and there's other group of things we need to wait until the court cases come out. At least then, the consultant that we use that knows our ordinance best can at least give us some feedback on the committee report.
I, I think that is a perfect next step forward in, in the meantime.
Yes, I do too.
Commissioner Schlosser.
I was, I was just going to say the same thing that Commissioner Shersnowski said in terms of public notification, I think, you know, I don't see any reason we can't start notifying the public to just make them aware as to when, you know, the permits have been submitted. So I, I just want to underscore that as well. I, I just, I, I just think we should notify folks. Heather's brought that up several times, and, you know, even though it's not specifically in the ordinance, I see no reason why we can't do some sort of notification at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay.
And that was my only comment, is it, could this just be an administrative, we were not changing the ordinance, so couldn't it just be an administrative change for, for the notification? And from what I'm hearing, it sounds like, even if we might be moving ahead with talking to the Cohen group, that none of the, you know, policy, none of the ordinance changes are really going to happen probably for another month, a month or so, till, till, you know, new people come in place. So really, this is just an administrative, not a, not a policy change.
Yes. I don't see anybody else's hand up. There are a couple questions from the public. Tom Evans?
I think this, everything's been adequately covered, and I'm going to pass on this, but I'll be waiting for the next chance for another topic.
Thank you. Rick Perry?
I too am going to pass at this point on this topic.
Walter Brittingham?
I'll pass.
Thank you. If that's okay with the commissioners, we'll move into New Business C then. Thank you very much, Ms. Metz, for putting that proposal together and all the work that your committee has done.
Thank you for the opportunity today.
Thank you. The next is a discussion and possible vote on proposed right-of-way easement between Del Dot and the City of Rehoboth Beach for access of construction of an entrance to the new BB Healthcare Campus adjacent to Well 8 on Warrington Road. Again, similar situation, that the Public Works Director gave us the update, a pretty thorough update at our most recent workshop, and has requested that the board take action in the way of a vote to approve moving forward with this proposed right-of-way easement between Del Dot and the City of Rehoboth. And I'll open up to any questions or a motion in a second.
Mayor, I, I think that Kevin covered this pretty adequately at the last meeting, so I'd, I'd move to approve the right-of-way easement between Del Dot and the City of Rehoboth Beach for the access of the construction of the entrance for the new BB Healthcare Campus adjacent to Well 8 on Warrington Road.
I second that for the same reasons that Commissioner Shersnowski has just stated. Kevin provided very, very complete information to us a week and a half ago.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the table. However, Commissioner Kaluzi has a question.
Yeah, just a simple question. I'm just wondering, Kevin, I'm assuming there's been no changes to what was proposed in what you, in what you gave us last at the workshop?
So if you'll recall, the, the discussion at the workshop was, you know, creating a new entry or an exit, kind of in the upper left-hand corner of the property. And they have, the only update is that they have now provided us, you know, the exhibits that show that. We were working off verbal last time, so I could throw that up if you'd like to see, because it did add a second temporary easement, temporary construction easement for constructing that gate and the exit in that parcel. But everything else, yeah, everything else was the same.
Yeah, no, it's not really necessary for me, it's just, for me, my concern is always protecting our wellhead, so if, if there's no major change, I'm fine, I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. And Walter Brittingham had a question, please, or a comment. Mr. Brittingham, are you still there?
I am.
You have a comment on this issue?
Yes, I do, please. Because, because of the time delay, I will just start talking. I really think this, this has been misrepresented. I believe that Kevin has had lots of meetings, and I don't believe that it had been reflected back to you folks. There are plans that Kevin knows about taking out part of our Forest Main. This is a production well. The state initially was not aware that it was a production well, they thought it was a lift station, and I've done extensive work on this. There are delivery issues as far as the trucks coming in, and I don't think he has represented to you that there is fence work and road work, and the road healthy way going back from the roundabout back to the hospital is now east going to via State Road, requiring gate work. And also, you're looking for an easement going back down towards, yeah, Old Landing Road, and there needs to be additional easement on the side or room, because you have a bike path and everything there. When the trucks come in for deliveries, they need room to park. This is too fast, it's not complete, you're all not being given all the facts. The, I talked with Century Engineering that works with Del Dot, and the lady said, well, there is a road around the building, and that's not true. There's considerable work and it ought to go to workshop. I'll leave it at that. I was lied to by Century Engineering, and Kevin is not being fully forthright with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have to say, I, I disagree entirely with you, Walter, and you know that, so.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you for your comment, but you just made it, thank you, Kevin. We have a motion and a second to approve the requested board action of approval of an easement request that, between the City of Rehoboth Beach and Del Dot, for the access to the construction of the entrance to new BB Healthcare Campus adjacent to Well 8 on Warrington Road. If there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Most, thank you. All right, we're going to move right to D, which is discussion and consideration adoption of a resolution recognizing the significance of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States granting women the right to vote. And I know the city manager told me that she'd been working with Commissioner Gay on this. Commissioner Gay, I'll open it up to you, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm pleased to have the opportunity to present this resolution today, especially in honor of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution, which gives women the right to vote. Let me just say briefly how it came about, and then I'll leave the resolution. The VIA and working with other local organizations, including the League of Women Voters of Sussex County, have been planning for many months, a parade, a celebration on August 26th, next week, which was the date that the, that the amendment was adopted. And, you know, they had a parade permit from the city, a whole bit. Well, the, the pandemic obviously brought that to a suspension halt. And while that is most unfortunate, I think we have a way here to, to not only recognize the occasion, but to recognize those organizations that have come forward to, to ask us to do this and who have joined as sponsors, and to fly a flag in preparation and in place of, of the parade celebration. So with that as background, I'll just state the, the resolution. Whereas the 19th Amendment recognized the significance of women's privilege, which when adopted in 1920, affirmed the citizenship of more than 26 million women and granted them a mechanism to empower themselves, their families, and their communities. And whereas the 19th Amendment was adopted on August 26, 1920. And whereas the year 2020 marks the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment, offering an unparalleled opportunity to commemorate a milestone of democracy. And whereas the City of Rehoboth Beach, Delaware, is proud to recognize that the adoption of the 19th Amendment marked the end of a three-generation struggle to win the right to vote for women. And whereas the City of Rehoboth Beach supports the following local and regional organizations in their desire to celebrate the 100th anniversary of women winning the right to vote, the organizations are the Village Improvement Association, the Fund for Women of Sussex County, the Colonel David Hall Chapter of the National Society, the Daughters of the American Revolution, Sussex County League of Women Voters, Women's March of Sussex, Sussex County Alumni Chapter, Delta, Theta, Sigma, Theta Sorority, Inc., and the Sunshine Circle Club. Now be it resolved by the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach on this day, 21st of August, 2020, that the City of Rehoboth Beach Mayor and City Commissioners support the celebration of the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, and will, by flying a suffragist banner at City Hall from August 26, 2020, through September 9, 2020. Thank you.
And just, just information with that last line, this resolution shall be effective immediately upon its adoption. I want to make sure that got in there. And if there are no questions on this, if I can get a motion and a second to approve this resolution?
I move approval of the resolution.
I second it, and if I could just make a comment, one, I want to thank Susan, the city manager, and others for making time and effort to do, to do this. I think it's important that as a city, we recognize critical and important milestones in our history, and this was certainly very, very important 100 years ago. But I want to make an aside comment that isn't meant to detract from the resolution at all, but it's meant for us to simply acknowledge that 100 years ago, there were still a large number of women who really were not given the right to vote. And so it took 45 more years until 1965 for most women of color and for all indigenous women to achieve the, either access to vote or the right to vote. So I, I think it's important that we just understand that also in our nation's history. Thank you, Susan, for moving us ahead, happy to second it.
Thank you, Dave, appreciate that addition.
Thank you, Commissioner Byrne. Thank you, Commissioner Byrne. Okay, and we do have, before I take it further, let's see, Rick Perry wanted to say something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to applaud Susan and the city manager, you know, for bringing this recognition of, as Commissioner Byrne said, a milestone to recognize the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment. And as Commissioner Burns has eloquently said, you know, there were others who, you know, waited even longer for the right to vote. And I think that this also emphasizes for our citizens here the importance of voting and the democratic rights that we have, and the importance of that is embodied in our Constitution and that anything that impairs anyone's right to vote is something that should not be allowed. And, you know, the 19th Amendment, I think, brings our attention to that. And so I applaud you for taking this step. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brittingham, did you have a comment you wanted to make? Mr. Brittingham, I know you're still there. Did you have a comment you wanted to make on this issue?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a resolution of the mayor and city commissioners of the city of Rehoboth Beach to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution. If there's no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is nomination of an individual to fill the remaining two-year term on Rehoboth Beach Board of Adjustment vacated by Linda Kaufman and the corresponding vote of that individual. That individual, as you see on the agenda, I am nominating is Randy Mason. There is a application on file from Mr. Mason with the city, and you should have that on your agenda. Just a little background on this, Jerry Capone, the Chair of the Board of Adjustment, has been requesting a new member to be added to the Board of Adjustment for the last couple of months. It's been pretty difficult from the standpoint of the COVID situation to find volunteers. Fortunately, we have a volunteer, Randy Mason, to take that place. I did appoint Linda last year, or reappointed Linda last year to a three-year term. She resigned, I believe, back in April or May and resigned the rest of her three-year term. So this nomination would be for Randy Mason to fill that seat for the remaining term, which would start in September. And this way, Mr. Mason will be available for the September meeting and to go through two more years. Basically, Section 27070 permits a vacancy to be filled by appointment of the mayor and confirmed by the majority of the Commissioners, and that is for the unexpired term. So that is some background. I'm open to any questions, if anybody has any, on the subject.
Moment just to address something that came up yesterday, and I think the Commissioners at this point are all aware of it. Yesterday, there were two FOIA complaints filed into Department of Justice. Both of them challenged the adequacy of the agenda item. The general rule for agenda items is that you need to provide a general statement of the broad topic to be discussed. I think this agenda does that. The FOIA complaints raised the issue of the name of the individual to be appointed was not included on the agenda. The, the application for participation on the Board of Adjustment was loaded to the agenda yesterday. The other thing worth mentioning is that it's been the city's practice for many years, going back to 2006, to oftentimes not include names on the agenda item. You know, that's not a statement about whether it's more appropriate or less appropriate to do it, but, but there is a past practice of agendas with this or very similar language. So my only point is to say, I think the agenda item is efficient, and it shouldn't hold you up from at least considering this issue today.
Thank you, Glenn. Any further comments, any of the Commissioners? If not, if I can get a motion and a second.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation to appoint Randy Mason to the Board of Adjustments.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Randy Mason to the Board of Adjustment. I do have a couple people in the public that would like to speak. First, I'll go to Tom Evans. Tom, I think you're trying to get on.
Shoes are right there.
Yes, they are. Where's my hat?
It's in the bag, maybe. I don't see it.
Yes. Here it is. Oh, great. It flows down the beach.
Wait, Tom, I'll come-
Yeah, I've gotta come back to him.
I'll come back to you. Rick Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that it's a wise decision to fill the vacancy, and I can't think of a better person who is knowledgeable about the city code and, you know, who I know from just personal conversations that I've had over the years with him, how important the city is to him and both from a business standpoint and from a resident's standpoint. He obviously is very invested here and, and I'm sure will add a great deal in terms of thought and process to, to the Board of Adjustments. So I encourage you to, to vote in favor of appointing him to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you. Tom Evans, are you back on the phone? Walter Brittingham, are you there? Think he's there. Walter?
Good afternoon, thank you. First of all, I felt the same way with, apparently with the people that filed the objection that the latest, the latest supporting documents came on very, very late and didn't give an opportunity for people to read them. We do not know who else was nominated or had ideas, but at the same time, Mr. Mason is a good person, and I don't know who else was nominated or asked to have the job, but he's, Mr. Mason is a really dirt decent person. Thank you.
Great. Before I go back to Tom Evans, Commissioner Gay, your hands up.
Yeah, I have several things to say here. First of all, I am, and I agree that Randy Mason is a, is an upstanding member of the community, has been a valuable contributor to the Parking Advisory Committee. I went to a number of their meetings and, and met with them there. And so, yes, I think, obviously, a valuable member of the community. However, I am troubled by the announcement of the nominee less than 24 hours before this meeting and the name not generally known to the public. Because of course, the city ruled during the pandemic is that they must sign up to speak 8 hours before. So it was too late for the public to sign up to ask questions of, you know, according to city policy. And I'm also troubled that the agenda didn't have the nominee's name when it was posted a week ago, and I do wonder why not, because his application is dated August 12th. So his name was known by August 14th, when the agenda was posted, and I don't know what changed to have it posted yesterday if there was no requirement to have it posted at all. But I will say that in terms of the specificity that we use for, for agenda items, we're obviously a lot more specific when it comes to naming, you know, partners in contracts or, or deals that we're doing than maybe we even have to be. But, but our practice is, you know, we didn't say in the, the, what we adopted today with Del Dot, that it was a state agency, we spelled it out as Del Dot. We didn't say we're doing a contract with the lowest bidder for the Lake Avenue Streetscape project. We said it was grass buster landscaping. And this has been the practice, as far as I can remember, for everything we've ever dealt with, is that we spell out, you know, who we're, who we're working with. So this seems to me to be an unfair announcement to, to, to the public. And from what I have read of the FOIA complaint that was submitted yesterday, it may in fact not be legal, and the AG will have to rule on that. And that won't happen right away, because I know it takes them like 10 days, whatever. But if it's determined not to be legal, then any Board of Adjustment decision, and even if it's, you know, 30 days into next month when they decide, any Board of Adjustment decision could be challenged in court based on, on whatever decision that they make. So that's one set of issues. The other issue, another set of issues that I'm a little concerned about is the makeup of the Board of Adjustment itself. It's a five-member board. Diversity of backgrounds is obviously very important. You try to cover a range, you know, you have some lawyers, it's ideal to like have an engineer, you have educators, whatever. And in most places, real estate people are not on boards of adjustment. And, and I realize, we already have one. So to me, we have one, and Mr. Mason would be the second. So to have two real estate professionals on a zoning board of adjustment for, with only five members on the board seems problematic. One, there's the obvious conflicts of interest. I mean, if there were to be a case that were to come up, and in fact, in the last 12 months, there was a case from Lingo, and that's Mr. Mason's employer, Lingo. So he would have presumably had to have recused himself from that. And I know that in addition to being a Realtor, he's also been involved in purchasing, investing properties for resale. And so the potential there, since those are the kinds of cases that the Board of Adjustment decides, there's the potential for conflict of interest. But beyond that, there's the appearance of partiality, and this is, you know, sort of where I think the public view comes in. You know, our colleagues in both Lewis and Dewey have zero real estate professionals on their Board of Adjustment, probably for this reason, because there, it, it brings into question the partiality of the, of the decisions. So at the end of the day, I'm wondering, what is the rush to vote today with all of these questions and wanting to discuss these issues more when it has not been ruled on yet by the AG? And this is not to say I would vote against Randy Mason if all of these questions were resolved, and not saying that at all, but I don't think it's fair to not tell the public. And the level of detail needed to understand the decision, you know, being made. Finally, I'll say, this is not a committee. You know, this is not like appointing somebody to the Law Oversight Committee, or the Animal Issues Committee, or Streets, or anything. Board of Adjustment is an independent authority with the power to reverse, affirm, or modify an order requirement, decision, or determination as ought to be made. And to that end, the Board of Adjustment has all the powers of the building inspector from which the appeal is taken. They're a quasi-judicial body, and they need, it needs much further consideration and all public processes and transparency upheld. That's the problem I have with the timing today.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlosser. You're muted. Can you unmute? Hold on.
I'm muted.
There you go.
Okay. Just one thing I wanted to, I had my hand up earlier too, and Glenn touched on it, but I did want to underscore, in the, in, when similar votes have been taken to appoint nominees to these boards by, by mayors over history of Rehoboth, these names have not been put out, you know, a week in advance or whatever. And I, you know, in September 2006, they were, and October 2006, November 2007, January 2008, October 2008, October 2009, October 2010, October 2011. So none of these dates prior to this mayor, prior to, you know, this discussion has, has the name, have the names been released publicly. I'm not saying it shouldn't be, but I'm saying, why are we all of a sudden deciding not to adhere to a precedent? So I, I would ask Glenn, though, you know, is, is, is the DOJ still looking at this or, and how much does past precedent, precedents will play into their decision? I mean, it's, it seems to be the operating protocol of, for, since 2006, that's what, 10, 14 years ago, that these names haven't been released publicly before a vote for the most part. So is that a big factor in, in thinking through FOIA? Can you just talk us through that real quick?
So I'm not so sure that any past practice is gonna drive the Department of Justice's decision on this issue, and the department is still, still looking at it. It's kind of in a unique posture in that typically, when a complaint is filed, the Department of Justice will send me correspondence and give me a certain amount of data to respond. In this instance, they said they don't need to hear anything from, back from us, and they'll be internally making a decision, which that may, that may signal nothing. It may just be a new practice during the pandemic, because the governor issued, when he, when he issued the changes to some of the FOIA procedures, he also included a provision saying that FOIA complaints do not need to be responded to until 15 days after the state of emergency is lifted. So in that, you know, in that instance, this, this decision wouldn't be made, you know, for, for perhaps months. So they may be readjusting the way they do business so that some decisions can be issued during the, during the pandemic. So I really don't know what that ultimately means, but I don't think that, you know, while we do have a past practice of not including names, it may just be the fact that they have been challenged previously, and I don't think it'll play any real role in the Department of Justice's decision.
Okay. It plays a role in my decision, because two administrations have practiced this, but nonetheless. And then, does the code, does our current code prohibit, you know, certain job, job occupations from being appointed to the Board of Adjustments at this time? Legally, is there any restriction on appointing somebody who is a real estate agent or a teacher or whatever the case may be?
No, no, there's not. You know, clearly, I think that Commissioner Gay brings up, brings up an interesting point that, you know, that sitting on the Board of Adjustment, you're sitting in a quasi-judicial circumstance. So there is a higher standard, and an appearance of impropriety would cause a member to have to recuse, but there's no prohibition on Realtors per se.
Okay. So it's no, there's no, there's nothing in the code that would prohibit any, any, any type of occupation? Okay. Thank you for answering those questions.
Tom Evans, if you're back on the phone. Max, could you? There you go.
I'm back. Am I here?
Yes, you are.
Well, I, by not being available at that moment, Susan Gay did an excellent job in laying out most of what I was going to say. For me, it's, I'll skip by the obvious, which is, it is troublesome to me that the name was not made public until sort of the city was forced to make it public, and that we may very well be right that it's not legal. That'll be up to the FOIA people in the Department of Justice to determine. But that being said, the applicant is well qualified. I mean, he's, he's an up, he's an upstanding member of our community, and everyone speaks highly of him. But I'll tell you, after being on the board for 22 years and 20 years as Chair, it's really hard to have a litmus test for who will make a good member of a board of zoning adjustment, because the single most important thing that I ever looked for when I put names forward was someone that I believed, although I couldn't know for sure, could make a fair, unbiased decision against their heart, keeping their head clearly looking at the facts. That being said, you never know what's gonna sway people. And the other important part is that no one has mentioned it, but recusals in the, in the, only can be done by the individual. No one can make an individual recuse themselves. So that is also an issue. If someone wants to stay and not recuse themselves, it may influence the vote, it may not, but it also may end up affecting a downstream appeal to the Superior Court. So having said that, people are impossible to predict- So having said that, people are impossible to predict, but I still think that the name should have been put forward so the public could speak to this in general and not after the two-day limit to put your name on to discuss this matter. With that, I will leave it at that.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay, you had something else?
Yeah, actually, I just want to use this as an opportunity to, to clarify and potentially educate for those of you who think that, that there's been this, this long history. First of all, we did receive this list of dates that Commissioner Schlosser gave of times when the, the list wasn't available. However, it's part of a memo that is marked privileged and confidential, which is why I did not refer to it in my statement. However, since she has mentioned it, I will, I will add to that because there's a big clarification. And that is that most of the dates on this list are in October, they're regular meetings in October. The reason that the names may not have been part of the agenda is because they were discussed at the workshop two weeks before. So they were known publicly, whether or not they were written and attached to the agenda, you know, is probably not neither here nor there. They were generally known from a discussion that took place two weeks before, but more recently, and this is really important, during my short time here, one year, there have been three times when people have been appointed, we had a full list of appointments at the, I guess probably at the workshop as well as at the regular meeting last October, which is why 2019 is not on this list. We had additions to that list one month later in, in November meeting. And then there was an appointment to the Law Oversight Committee in April because someone stepped down and a new person was being appointed and that name is on, on the agenda. So three times during my short time here, we, we have done it. I'm sure that somewhere over this list from the past 15 years, there's probably a meeting or two where it may have happened, but that doesn't make it right. And I, if anything, I think that the history will show more times it's, we've said the name than we haven't.
Commissioner Kluzy.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mendelison and Mayor, but as I understand it, the mayor makes appointments and it's up to the commissioners to either confirm those appointments or, or not. It is not the role of the voters to weigh in on whether these people should be confirmed. I, I think there it's, it's overstepping. Yes, we want to be transparent, but we are elected by the people, we represent the people, and I think it is our job to have done the legwork to understand whether the person is the right person for the job. So why is it that we need, you know, people to weigh in that whether this person's the right person or not? We've done our legwork. We know whether this person could be the correct person for the, the position. And I, I totally disagree with Commissioner Gay that we have to wait for the, the public to give us input on whether they like this person or not. I'm sorry, I think we're doing our job. We were elected to take this position. We were elected to be able to make decisions on, on the, on the part of, of the voters. That's why they elected us. So enough said, but that is my position.
Thank you. And Rick Perry, you stuck your hand up again.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to jump in again. Thank you for recognizing me. To Commissioner Gay's point, I would challenge you to find anyone in this city who is impartial. Everyone has prejudices, everyone is partial to certain things. And each of you serving on the Board of Commissioners has run on a platform which, you know, expresses your views and your expectations for how you will serve as a commissioner. And I don't think that disqualifies you from serving as our commissioners because I trust that you all look out for our best interests. And to Mr. Evans' point as to type of person that he looked to on the Board of Adjustment, being someone who has integrity and would make the right decisions based on fact, I believe that Randy Mason is just that kind of person. And when it comes to a recusal, I believe that anyone on the, on the Board of Adjustment who is faced with a potential conflict will make the right decision if they are a person of integrity such as Randy Mason. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schlosser?
Two clarifications. One, you know, first of all, so there's no sensationalist conspiracy theory, you know, of bullet points, you know, brought up here from Commissioner Gay's comment that, first of all, our attorney brought up that there was past precedent in those years, number one. And number two, anybody who did some research on this can look at the public record of those dates and see where there were not names put forward in those particular, in particular meetings. So bringing up something about confidential and privileged information is, is seems just like an attempt to talk about lack of transparency, which is not true. It is all public information. And our attorney brought that, brought up those dates and that precedent before I even mentioned it. Number two, I totally agree with Commissioner Kluzy that it is our, our role and responsibility to look at the qualifications of anybody brought up to this commission for an appointment to a commission or a committee. And, you know, so I, I believe that is in the jurisdiction of the full Board of Commissioners at this point. So I just wanted to make clarification on that point and also to make the point about the, let's not start some conspiracy here that there's some documents that, you know, shouldn't be talked about here. Everything I talked about is already in the public record. Glenn, you, you did bring up that there's some past precedents, correct? And it's from public record?
I did.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to, Tom Evans, you have something else before we take a vote?
Yes. The only thing I'd like to do is say something back in view of what Rick Perry just said. He paraphrased me more or less accurately, but, but what, that's his opinion, he can have his opinion. I don't know anybody, how they're going to operate with regard to recusal. I will tell you that on a dozen cases over my 20 years, someone didn't recuse that should have recused and it's, we cannot make them recuse. So it is not atypical and it doesn't always end up being a problem, particularly if the case goes one way or goes a different way. If there's not an appeal made to Superior Court, it's essentially no, no harm is done. But it, it's more problematic to me, and you're getting away from this, that the name was not made public. And I would say that in fact, it is a problem because no matter what Kluzy says, it is also the citizens' rights to watch and oversee our elected officials in carrying out their duties. So yes, we voted for you, we want to make sure you do your job, and we have a right to see the light of day in the process. And I'm done.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the table to accept the nomination and do the appointment of Randy Mason as a member of the Board of Adjustment. If there's nothing else to discuss, Commissioner Byrne? Commissioner Byrne?
Aye.
Commissioner Schiffer?
Aye.
Commissioner Gay?
No.
Commissioner Schlosser?
Aye.
Commissioner Kluzy?
Aye.
Commissioner Shrusniewski?
Mayor, I abstain. I think Randy's a, a great person, but I, I'm not thrilled with the process here.
Okay. And the chair votes aye and the motion carries. Thank you. Any Commissioner comments?
Briefly, I've got two, Mayor. Thank you. Yeah, I, I want to commend the city manager and her team for, for the wayfinding signage that has been going up, particularly the big sign on 1B, the entrance into the city. I, I was thrilled to see that go up and that little, little triangle. It's a nondescript, kind of a tacky looking triangle and, and it's been improved greatly with this signage. So thank you for that. I'm hopeful that now in the, in the near future, the city, perhaps Rehoboth and Bloom could do some plantings there to, to spruce that up a bit. Thank you very much. And the second announcement is just a, a quick update on the Cape and Lopman Senior Center. They are planning a soft opening the week of September 14th.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Gay?
Actually, I'd like to go last because mine segues into the future meeting dates. So if I need to last, I appreciate that.
Sure. Commissioner Kluzy?
Yes, as far as the, the signage, I'm, I'm pleased to see it all go up. There's only one thing I would, would say, the entrance from State Road, one of the things I think would just be nice and obviously doesn't have to happen right away, but if it could, that I think would be good. It says City of Rehoboth Beach and somehow I feel like it should say, welcome to the city of Rehoboth. Be a kind of nicer, you know, because it's an entrance to the city. Anyway, if that can be, if that can be taken care of, that would be wonderful. If not, so be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we're going to go into future meeting dates.
No, 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 I, I have comments before that.
Oh, I thought.
They're, they're related, but it's, that they're not, it's not all about that.
Feel free.
Okay. So first of all, I was a little surprised and several people contacted me about the, the unfortunate cancellation of the Tuesday special meeting. I mean, I was never going to be there because I was on vacation this week, that was known. But within a half hour of it being canceled, I heard from like three people who were surprised and were planning to, to join in. So, which confirmed to me, since I was only hearing from a few, that people do, do watch it, they do, they are interested in, in what we're doing and we're, we're still in a, in a pandemic. So I, I thought it was, it was unfortunate and I certainly would have made every effort to be there had I known that, that I, that, that that would have made the difference. But something else happened after that, and that is that I noticed that it's been completely removed. The Tuesday meeting does not appear at all on our calendar for next week. And here it is Friday and there's no agenda for it, which means I guess we can't have a meeting on the 25th because it's not there, disappeared from the calendar.
That was my mistake. Basically, we canceled the meeting and I neglected to contact Ann for the next week's meeting. So there will be no meeting on the 25th. My suggestion is the next COVID meeting would be on the first Tuesday.
Okay. And that may be all right, but then this is where I have a, a, a comment to bring forth from Carol Everhart from the chamber who could not be part of our meeting today, but she did want me to, to tell you all that the, the chamber has, is, had very good success with the meterless Mondays. They're very supportive of it and they would like us to continue doing them through the end of the season, which would be, I don't know, two or three more additional Mondays. Now, I realize that our next meeting, the August 31st is a Monday and that's when it's scheduled to end. So our next meeting is the next day and the following Monday is obviously six days later. So we could pass it on September 1st and, and be okay for extending it, but it seems kind of short notice. Maybe, maybe not. I just, I, as I said, things do change and happen weekly. I would, I would want, I certainly support extending it, but we really not in a position to talk about it here today and we can't talk about it again till September 1st. So I don't know if we want to have any kind of consensus on that or what, but that would certainly be a, an, an agenda item for, for that day.
Well, I could suggest that we could put out an agenda, a special meeting agenda for this subject only, for next Friday, the 28th, or Monday, the 31st, to discuss the possibility of extending Meterless Monday. Remember, one of the things we discussed when we did Meterless Monday, and I know this isn't on the agenda, so I don't want to go too, too deep, was that we didn't want to go through Labor Day. But if the commissioners would like, we can have a brief meeting virtually on either the 28th or the 31st to discuss this subject. Any thoughts? Or I can just put it on the agenda? But it would be a special meeting.
Yeah, just a question to clarify. There's, there's Labor Day Monday and is that it? Is that the only Monday not included?
The 20th.
Currently?
The 20th is the day it goes through. It goes through Sunday, the, the 20th. So it'd be Labor Day and the 14th.
So two, two more, yeah.
And the 14th.
You know, Labor Day and the 14th.
The 7th and the 14th.
Correct.
Okay.
So, I mean, any, want to have a brief meeting on Friday at nine o'clock, 10 o'clock?
Mayor, is this something that we need to vote on or is this, is this something that the city manager can make an executive decision on?
I mean, technically, we, we're not supposed to be discussing it now, right Glenn? To take it any further. So we'd probably have to have a discussion about it, as much as even we've had would require a meeting, I believe. But Glenn, you can weigh in.
Yeah, I, I just mentioned this here, that I, I would love for the city manager to be able, to be able just to do it, but since it's an action that you all took to extend it, I think it needs to be an action of the, of the commission.
I, I, I think it's fine then scheduling a meeting Friday, next Friday or Monday. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Mayor, whatever day works best for you, I'm, I'm free, my day, anyone else.
Ann, I know you're on here. Would next Friday, say, a brief meeting at 10 o'clock work for you?
Yeah, that's fine because planning commission will have their meeting in the afternoon.
Okay. So why don't we all plan? And Ann, if you can put that on the agenda as discussion of extending Meterless Monday through September 20th. And a vote, please.
So that'll be the only agenda item? We won't get any kind of other updates or do anything else? And we'll continue to have the meeting on the first?
Yes. COVID meeting would be on the first. And then our next meeting would be the 8th as a workshop. We would have the COVID meeting that day as well.
Right. Okay.
And so, Ann, if you could, on the workshop, put the COVID discussion, the same as it's been on the other agendas, but put that on the workshop. And then the next meeting after that would be the 18th for the regular meeting, the swearing Any other things from commissioners? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.